Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
And Councilmember O'Connell? Councilmember O'Connell?
Do I get to say here?
Councilmember O'Connell, are you here?
I am here.
Good. She's joining us from Texas remotely, but will be participating fully. Item number two, public comment. Item's not on the agenda is the council's policy to refer matters in this form to staff for investigation and their action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Anyone in the audience like to speak to the council on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll get right into the conduct of the study session. Conduct a study session to review the recommended 2011-2012 general fund, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds budget. City manager.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council. Can you hear Irene?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. We are here, as we have done in previous years, to review the general fund operating budget and subsequently tomorrow night, the enterprise funds operating budgets with you prior to your consideration for adoption of the budgets at your next regular city council meeting on June 28th, which is next Tuesday. Purpose of our presentation tonight is to review with you not every detail of the budget or every expenditure, revenue, and work program item that it contains, but more specifically the big picture overview of all of those items, both from a citywide perspective, which will be handled tonight by myself and Finance Director Edmund Suon, but also on a departmental basis. And as you see, we have the department directors present tonight so that we might move through at least most of the general fund operating departments. As we go through the budgets tonight, it is, as I said, our intent to speak to you from an overview perspective and to provide detail or explanation on some of the high points of the expenditures, the revenues, and the work program. We certainly want to use this opportunity tonight and tomorrow night and in the next several days at the council's pleasure to review with you at any level of detail that you're interested, any of the items in this budget, and would request and welcome any questions or comments that you might have on items at any level of detail, whether we've highlighted them or not. So with that, I'm going to turn to giving you a overview of the fiscal year 10-11, the results of that year, both operationally and financially, and then turn over the presentation to our finance director, who will walk you through some of the major financial items relevant to the 11-12 budget. Fiscal year 10-11 was, as I don't need to elaborate for the benefit of the city council, an extraordinary year, both financially as well as operationally. The primary work program issue that we addressed during the year was the response to and the continuing recovery from the Glenview fire incident, which I'll discuss in a little bit more detail in just a moment. But since this is a discussion that is primarily focused around the budget, I think it's worth noting that there were many significant financial and operational issues that were addressed during this year from a budgetary perspective. The most significant one being that we are currently projecting now with only a few days remaining in the fiscal year, that the general fund operating deficit that we originally projected at the beginning of the year and that we, the beginning of the fiscal year, this time last year, and that we discussed with you as recently as the February 16th planning session that we conducted with your assistance for preparation of preparing the 11-12 budget. We projected a deficit of $920,000. The city council will doubtless remember, as staff does, the extended discussion that the city council conducted and your concern about a continuing use of one-time resources or limited-term resources to address that deficit situation. And I'll remind you, for the sake of the record, that that deficit resulted, was a remainder amount that remained even after very significant efforts were taken to reduce operating expenditures across the board. You'll remember, I'm sure, that we eliminated an additional 10 and 1/2 positions from our city staff lineup last year, and at that time, we had continued all of the operating changes and fiscal changes that had been implemented in previous years, resulting in very significant constraints to our operating budget. I'm pleased to report to you tonight and with this budget that the year-end financial projections demonstrate that we can expect that that deficit is fully eliminated. It's eliminated by virtue of two companion situations. The first is that all operating expenditures have been contained at the reduced levels that this budget originally projected. And you can see that operating expenditures projected for the year end as compared to the budget remain essentially identical, which means that we were successful not only in producing a budget that adequately represented the reduced level of expenditures that were necessary in order to fund a reduced level of city services, but also that our management practices and our expenditure oversight remains fully in effect and, in fact, was and continues to be very successful. Combined with that was what I would describe as a very positive situation that we experienced with an increase in revenues over the budgeted amounts that we anticipate receiving by year end, that in total brings revenues to 1.2, plus 1.2 million dollars over the anticipated budget amounts. That increase is primarily experienced in the sales tax category, as our finance director will elaborate on further, but represents a legitimate increase that we believe we can rely on making certain analysis and careful evaluation going into the next year. As you see on the table, projected on the wall, that operating deficit at the beginning of this fiscal year has been reduced not only to zero, but to a plus $113,000 positive year-end balance. Not a huge amount of money, very, very close to net even, but again, you can see from the chart on the wall that the budgeted expenditure numbers are actually very close, and there is a significant uptick of revenues compared to budget, the estimated actual compared to the amended budget revenues. This means, and I think it bears repeating, that the budget balancing options that are shown on the left side of the chart, $500,000 in excess ERAF and repayment of the loan that is, remains outstanding from the redevelopment agency to the equipment reserve and subsequent transfer of those funds from the equipment reserve into the general fund operating budget need not occur. And we're recommending to you tonight that at the year end, that in fact, that transfer not occur, and that fund balance that existed coming into this year and that will be slightly increased by the positive fund balance for the current year be used to offset what is a modest deficit that we've projected for the 11-12 fiscal year. And again, our finance director will discuss that in a little bit more detail. The, there were numbers of significant accomplishments that we achieved over the past year. Many of them are listed in the long list that's contained in the city manager's letter to the budget. I think a couple of them are noteworthy for highlighting. The first, unrelated to the Glenview fire, is the fact that at long last, we, along with Caltrain, achieved groundbreaking on the Caltrain grade separation and new station site development, which is a tremendous initiative that we're looking forward to, as is our community, to improve transportation, public transit opportunities within the community, and we hope to create a new centerpiece for our downtown and to kickstart and support revitalization of our downtown. To that end, we completed the development of the transit corridors plan and initiated the environmental impact report process, which is continuing to be ongoing. In the area of jump-starting economic growth within the community, we are very proud of the fact that we were instrumental in providing both funding as well as support and encouragement and enthusiasm for the development of a new casual fine dining restaurant, Jack's at the Crossing, which rounds out in a very meaningful way opportunities, dining opportunities for residents of San Bruno, but also the centerpiece Crossing Development Project, which has become a very noteworthy and very high-value location within our community. We honed our emergency response and our emergency preparedness skills over this past year with the real-life experience of response to the Glenview fire incident and the tragic consequences that that incident has brought to our community. I think I would be remiss if I did not once again articulate how very proud I am and that I believe you and our community should be, and I believe that you are, of the response that was provided by literally every single member of the staff of the city of San Bruno. It was truly an astounding team effort that allowed us to mobilize the, turns out to be phenomenal, resources of the city of San Bruno all by itself, but more to the point, allowed us to rise to the occasion of true leadership of the community's interests and the outpouring of response that we received through the mutual aid system. It continues to be my very strong belief that without the leadership, the instinct, the passion, and the compassion that our staff provides and that you provide in leadership, both to this organization as well as to the community, we would not have been nearly as successful, even with the small army of mutual aid response that we received both that night as well as in the succeeding weeks and that we have continued to receive in terms of the interest and the support of our colleagues up and down the state and in federal agencies and elsewhere. We truly demonstrated what San Bruno is all about, and I think although there are many and continuing great challenges in front of us, I think that we have proven that the city can do what it takes to represent and address the needs of its residents. And at the end of the day, that's really what this is all about. That's what public service is about. So once again, I think that if we take away nothing from this past year and the challenging and almost at sometimes overbearing workload and intensity of the issues that we've had to address, if we take away nothing, I hope that, or if we take away nothing else, I hope it is the understanding of what we have brought to service to this community and what it means to provide that service on an ongoing basis. I think we've represented the best of the best. The work effort associated with the Glenview fire incident, oh, you have a little clicker button, I'm sorry, I thought you had disappeared, that I wanted to just address for a moment because it is not only what we've done in the past year, but what will continue in a very real sense to define a very critical proportion of the city's work effort on a going-forward basis, at least through the next year and potentially into subsequent years, addresses some of the very critical issues that are projected on the wall there, but as I said, will continue, these are by no means items that we have accomplished and checked off the list. These are items that are continuing and, as I said, will define the work effort going into the next year. Those include anticipating and responding to the needs of affected residents and to our community generally, continuing to respond to and provide for the nationwide public attention and media attention, using that as a way of providing the message and the story of the city of San Bruno. Supporting ongoing investigations, even as we see the NTSB investigation winding to a conclusion at the latter part of the summer. The investigation that is, or the rulemaking and investigations that are going on through the California Public Utilities Commission will continue for at least into the middle part, if not through the entire next fiscal year. And there continue to be a variety of other interests and potential investigations that may arise over the next several months. It continues to be absolutely critical that we maintain a cooperative and well-coordinated working relationship with PG&E. And I think increasingly important as we move forward into the next phase of the community's overall recovery is that we make good on our promise that we will not forget and that we will take any actions that are necessary to, that we can support, that assure that there is a very, very small probability, down to zero if possible, that something like what happened in San Bruno ever happens again anywhere else. With that, I'm going to ask the finance director to move to a more detailed discussion of the financial issues that have been relevant for the year-end 10-11, and then move immediately from there into an overview from a financial perspective of the preparation, the issues, and the items that we considered in developing the 12, 11-12 budget. And then from there, we'll move into individual departmental presentations.
Thank you, Connie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Am I coming in? Following up on, following up on the city manager's comments in terms of what we're expecting for the 10-11 results, some of the significant contributors, as mentioned by Connie, were sales tax and the other two contributors were TOT and also the business taxes. Specifically in sales tax revenues, the economic segments that actually brought about significant growth were in the area of transportation. And within that category, specifically new auto sales and also service stations. As we all know, we experienced quite a bit of increase in terms of retail gasoline price. So that actually contributed to the growth in terms of sales tax revenues in that area. In terms of new auto sales, the prior year comparisons were such that they were so depressed, we actually saw some, a nice comparison in terms of growth in that area. So those were really the two primary contributors. Over and above that, we had some one-time contributors that added to the $891,000. And one of the significant ones were the triple calculation done by the state. When we had the recession back in 9-10, the state basically held back quite a bit in terms of their payments to local agencies. So that also added into the 891 positive results that we saw in sales tax revenues. Moving on to TOT tax or hotel tax, last year, or this year, I'm sorry, was the full year, was the first year we had the full adjustment in terms of the tax rate increase that was approved by the voters back in November of 2009. Our TOT tax rate increased by two percentage points from 10% to 12%, and thereby helping to contribute to the increase. Also, an improvement in the overall economic segment helped drive some demand and occupancy levels in that sector. So both of those combined to add, contributed to the sales tax, I mean, I'm sorry, hotel tax revenues there. And lastly, in terms of business taxes, one of the primary contributors is really the tax that we get for airport parking. There was a tax holiday that expired at the end of the calendar year 2010, so we had the benefit of having the full tax rate for the remaining six months of the current fiscal year. In terms of, moving on to the preparation of the 11-12 budget, some of the challenges and assumptions that we incorporated into the process as a base, we continue to hold operating costs, so direction was really to hold costs at the current year's level for the upcoming year. However, some costs we don't have the ability to control, and one of them is the rates that are charged by Calpers, which pays for employee retirement benefits. So those rate increases added significantly to the expenditure growth there, to the tune of $614,000 for the general fund. And in thinking about, again, the containment of costs, furloughs will continue at the current rate, which is 3.125% of the salaries, and that translates into salary reductions for the rank and file. And then lastly, in terms of medical premiums, those would, any increases would be absorbed by the employees in terms of additional furlough time. And again, that translates into a pay reduction for employees. Other considerations, the reductions that we put in place for the current year obviously will be carried forward into the next year. In terms of revenues, some of the revenues that we built in, some of the assumptions that we built in include, in the building division, $300,000 from the Glenview permit fees that we will seek from the trust, and then also $200,000 in permit revenues that we're expecting from the Treetops project. In terms of investment income, there is a decline there to reflect the lower yields. The current interest rate environment is still very, very low as the Fed continues to want to stimulate the economy to get us out of, you know, very, very slow and uneven growth that we're continuing to see generally. And then in terms of interest income from the RDA, because there was a pay down, a partial principal pay down, we're reducing the interest income correspondingly to reflect the lower principal that's outstanding. And then in terms of state budgets, what's built into the budget, state budget impacts, what's built into the budgets that are in front of you includes $100,000 in COPs funding that we're thinking will be eliminated as part of the governor's proposal, and then $37,000 reduction in terms of library funds coming from the state. There are other considerations, and they'll be talked about in more detail by the departments. One of them is the potential increase in booking fees that will be addressed in the police department budget at tomorrow's session. And then obviously, there's the concern, continued concern with the governor's proposal regarding the elimination of RDA or possibly a ongoing payment that's being considered from the RDA for the upcoming year and then pretty much in perpetuity is what's being proposed. Again, those will be discussed in greater detail as we go through the department budgets. So this slide shows really the summary of what we're projecting in terms of total revenues and expenditures for the general fund. As you can see, we're looking at about a $31.9 million total revenues for the general fund and expenditures in the neighborhood of $32.2 million, leaving a deficit of about City manager earlier identified the fact that we have fund balance that is available, and it actually grew by a little bit over $100,000 because we're expecting an operating surplus for this year. So that brought the expected fund balance for the fiscal year end to $934,000. We'll be using $322,000 in order to close, what staff is recommending, city manager's recommending, is to use a portion of that to close that $322,000 gap for the upcoming year. In looking at the various categories, major categories in terms of revenues, we want to really demonstrate to the city council that we're still being very conservative in terms of our revenue projections. If you focus in on column two, which is the 2010-11 estimated revenues for the current year, and compare that to column three, which is what we're proposing, you'll see really some small adjustments. And overall, the total adjustment is less than 1.5%. You can't quite see it in the bottom right-hand corner there, but the total adjustment is $443,000 out of a $31 million budget there, and that works out to be slightly than 1.5%. And again, we basically wanted to continue to be conservative, given the economic climate and the continued unevenness in terms of economic growth overall. So as we walk through each line item for the revenues, we really were focused on making sure that we didn't want to overextend in terms of estimating any type of growth, and so therefore, really modest adjustments in those areas generally. Some of the major revenues, it's a little bit small on the slide, so you might want to refer to your handouts there. Our major revenue categories include sales tax, property tax, hotel-motel tax, and the building revenues there. And as you can tell, looking over a five-year period, including what we're estimating for this year and what we're projecting for next year, it's really pretty flat. Obviously, we had some bottling out in terms of revenues for most of the categories back in '08-'09, and some improvements with the exception of sales tax last year and then, you know, some growth for this year. And again, I think this story, if I may, for this particular slide, is that we're really looking at pretty modest growth for the upcoming year, and these revenues continue to be relatively flat. You know, the major declines that we've seen in sales tax hopefully are behind us when it kind of bottomed it kind of bottomed out in the 2009-'10 year. And again, part of that was also contributed by the fact that the state basically withheld some of that triple-flip money to the local agencies there. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager to talk about departmental budgets, and there's specific questions from the City Council?
It's not necessarily that it's going to remain flat. You have projected it to be. I'm sorry. It's not necessarily that it's going to remain flat. It's you've projected it to be flat, you know, as a conservative measure, but all indications are it is slowly growing.
That's correct. I mean, we certainly have seen some GDP growth overall, but at the same time, it's been quite uneven. If you look back at historical basis, usually, in a major recession, there's greater growth. And this particular recovery that we're seeing is really much slower than on a historical basis.
And what I'd like to know is, we've been watching this quarterly.
Correct.
And I know there was some, I guess, six months ago, that you had some, you know, cautious good news, but it seems like it really rallied in the last quarter.
Yeah. What we basically did was, we looked at actual results. Six months ago, you're correct, we were already seeing some templates of growth there. So the fact that we now have one more quarter of results kind of confirmed that there's a little bit of sustainability, but at the same time, we continue to be, I think, cautious and conservative in looking at what we're projecting for the final results for this year and also going forward. Obviously, we're hoping that, you know, the economy does get back on track and then we'll see, you know, better growth, but there are certain areas that are still very problematic, and one of them is really, for instance, in the real estate sector. You know, we continue to hear news about how bad it is in terms of resales, home resales, whether it's new homes or resale homes, as an example.
Are there any other City Council questions right now?
Irene, anything?
I don't have questions at this moment. I have some comments to make before we go on to the department heads, so it's now a time to do that.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. First of all, if it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the staff for their very thorough job in preparing the budget. This is my 16th budget, and as well as yours, and every time they get it better and it's more comprehensive, so I just wanted to say that. And also to thank Cable and Miriam for allowing me to participate this way. It's great. I can see you all, and I'm glad you can hear and see me, so I appreciate that. And then, Connie, are we going to go on next to the City Council portion of the budget? Or should I say my little comments now?
Why don't you hang on to them for a minute? It was my intent to move on to the City Council, City Manager, and Human Resources sections of the budget as the first part of the departmental presentations.
Okay.
Great.
I'll wait to make my other comments later.
Okay, thank you. Before I move to the portion of the departmental presentations that I'll be covering tonight, I wanted to mention a significant element of the overall budget picture, and I probably should have mentioned this in my earlier comments. Just to avoid confusion, I want to be very clear that the extraordinary costs associated with the ongoing response recovery from the Glenview fire incident are not included in this budget, and those, that includes both the costs that have been incurred to date, which have been the subject of very careful tracking. Both costs that have been incurred to date that are being incurred on an ongoing basis and those that we anticipate in the future, particularly in the large cost area related to the infrastructure repair and rebuilding, are all being covered through a variety of non-city sources. And in particular, there are three sources that we look to and are continuing to navigate some complexity in the various issues about what costs come from where. But very simply put, the city has insurance for some of its infrastructure losses, some of its property losses, and that includes some of our infrastructure property, water and sewer and storm drains and park facilities, for example. We also have been taking advantage of the disaster reimbursement process that is a feature of the State Emergency Management Agency services. We have worked very closely and cooperatively with them, as well as with PG&E, and have received reimbursement for almost all of the claims, or maybe all of the claims that we've submitted to date through the CalEMA reimbursement process. Lastly, as the Council is aware, we have, in cooperation with PG&E, established a trust which is available for the city's uninsured and unreimbursed costs associated with and in response to and arising from the incident. So again, none of those costs are affecting the general fund and are not, they are not included in this budget, so I want to be sure that that is well-understood. Moving on, because, at the end of the day, as I said before, the city's operating situation remains on a very constrained platform, and as you will see as we move through the departmental presentations, costs have been contained at a very flat level compared to the prior years. And you see, in each presentation, as you see on the slide in front of you right now, you'll see two prior years of budgeted expenditures compared to the next year's proposed budget. And I think what you're going to see almost across the board is either reductions in cost on a budget basis or tight containment of costs at the prior year's level. You see that for the three budget sections that I'm going to overview very quickly right now.
To the Chair. I apologize. Mr. Mayor, there was a Subcommittee of the Council, I'm sorry, there was a Subcommittee for the Council on the budget. Were they going to report anything, or was, or not? It's fine, we can move on?
Yeah, it was pretty much an overview of what you're going to hear tonight. We just wanted to, and I think the Manager wanted to make sure that we knew there were no huge anomalies in what is presented this evening, and it's pretty much what we heard.
So it wasn't a projection for the future, or five years from now was more or less just the budget that we have before us and a review of that?
This budget, but there were some concerns, I think Vice Mayor Salazar made-
Sorry guys, I can't hear you. Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes.
Let me repeat it. Let me repeat the question. The question was, on the Subcommittee, did they just discuss this budget that's before us, or were there any thoughts given or discussion in regards to future, three years from now, funds if we lose them from the state, et cetera?
We didn't get into too much detail. I know that Vice Mayor Salazar made some comments about concerns going forward on rates that we would be charging people for various services, wastewater, those kinds of things, because of what we're dealing with, you know, with Baykeeper and the Water Board, those types of things. But in general, we didn't try to get a long-term projection, because as you know, it's so hard to do, especially in this economic situation. We were just gratified that the work the staff has done, and the economy has proved a little bit that, you know, we're, look like we're okay. Way better than some cities, not as good as some, but we are, as I say, the rubber meets the road here, but we're also the bottom feeders, and we're so subject and to the whims of, unfortunately, especially the state of California, and they're in action to actually, you know, bite the bullet like we're having to do. So it was a general discussion on what you're hearing tonight. And Michael, do you have anything to add to that?
No. I think that summarized it pretty well. We reviewed a lot of the assumptions and really just made sure that we were all in agreement on the basis for this budget, but I don't remember covering anything that I don't see here.
And I'll just add to that to say that staff requested a brief review, and it was actually a very brief review primarily of, entirely of the assumptions that were built into the revenue projections, given that you might see a substantial swing in what you might have been expecting to see based on prior year discussions and even the discussion that we had at the February 16 meeting. We wanted to make sure that we tested our assumptions with the City Council and that, and again, those were the revenue assumptions that were built into the overview, that, most of which you've just, you've just heard, but there won't be anything that was discussed at that meeting that you won't hear tonight. So if it's okay to move along, I'll do that. Just quickly, reviewing the City Council's budget, you can see that there, that budget remains very flat. There are no significant, there are no changes to the overall content or basic expenditure concepts that are incorporated in that budget. There is one supplemental item. I'm going to defer discussion of that and ask Director Randy Schultz to cover that in his overview of the Community Services Department. It is a proposal for a $10,000 allocation anticipating the upcoming centennial celebration for the city of San Bruno in a few years hence. That item is being called out as, I believe there are a total of four supplemental request items that are not included in this budget, in the expenditure or revenue items, in the expenditure or revenue calculations that you see and that we're discussing with you tonight. They are held out as items that really represent a, either a substantially different way of doing business or a substantially new item of consideration. And so we call those out for your special attention and ask you to consider them separately. If you determine that they should be funded, then they will be incorporated into the final budget. It looks to me like we've lost Irene. She's not hearing us?
Oh, your computer did. Is that working? She said her computer crashed, so she said we could just continue. I'll keep you on the phone so you can hear if you'd like.
That would be good.
Okay. Great.
Okay, great, all right. So I, again, I will defer discussion of the supplemental item and move right along to the City Manager's budget, unless there's a question.
Are we on the City Council?
Yes.
I just had one quick question. On page 35, real quick, printing, copying, and binding, it's at $21,000, which is three issues per year of FOCUS. My understanding is last year indicated four for $26,000?
Yeah. Again, thank you for calling that out. Again, Mr. Schwartz will address that during his presentation as a proposal for both providing more citywide information to the public and reducing the cost of the production of FOCUS. So if we could hold on that? Thank you. Okay. Well, we'll get to that when we get to it, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving along to the City Manager's office. And again, it's our intent to move through these roughly in the order that they show in the budget, so you're not having to flip back and forth a lot with a couple of small departures. There is, there is, again, essentially no change in the City Manager's Office budget. Expenditures remain absolutely flat with the exception of the mandated increases in the purse costs associated with the retirement system. In the human resources area, if we could move to the slide on the work program, one of the key issues, and again, the expenditure program is very flat, and in fact, the expenditures, I believe, have reduced by approximately $20,000. The work program in the HR area is going to be impacted during the coming year with an item that has a broad-reaching effect on all of the departments and certainly on the expenditure program going into the subsequent fiscal year 12, 13, and beyond. And that is that all of our employee bargaining units, there are a total of six, are currently working under contracts that will expire effective June 30 of 2012. And as we have seen over the past couple of years, that level of effort and the timeline associated with negotiation of bargaining unit agreements, the process can be complex and the timeline can be fairly long. So we anticipate being in negotiations probably in the, about six months from now time period, and that being a critical work effort over the next, over the next fiscal year. I will step out just a bit and speak to the importance of those contracts in that, number one, obviously, it's in the city's interests as it is in our employees' interests, or at least I believe it is, in everybody's interests, that we have a clear understanding and a, as much as possible, no surprises type of bargaining environment and work towards, wherever we can, a, at least a somewhat long-term contractual relationship. And when I say long-term, I mean, it would be great if we could get into agreements that are two years instead of one year. We've been doing that now for some period of time. That remains obviously problematic in the economic environment, and I think that if nothing else, we will be looking at continuing to work towards a level platform of sustainable cost for employee services into the long-term future. We, we've experienced a number of years now where balancing the budget has relied on employee concessions, and to the extent that the environment and costs and revenues do not suggest that the city's financially capable of a much different situation, we need to be looking seriously, along with our employees, at how we are structured to contain costs into the long-term. So this will be a, this will be a very important work effort over the next year and something that I think will take all of our attention.
Connie?
Yes?
Very quick. If furloughs were gone in the next budget, if furloughs were gone, what would that, what would that dollar amount be that would be added back to the budget? For all departments just combine one lump number?
Yeah. The number, we can precise this for you, is between $220,000 and $250,000 across all city bargaining units. That's, obviously, we can precise that number for you.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Now, furlough, when I, when I said that number, I meant only the amount, the base furlough, that did not include the amount that is now attributable to an additional employee cost for the medical premium, which is an additional amount. So we, we can give you that more precisely.
That's perfect. So I need it.
Are there any other questions? Can you ask Irene if she has any questions?
Could you ask Irene one of these questions?
They want, they want to know if you have any questions. She says she has two comments.
Great. I'm gonna hang up the phone. Okay, sorry, guys. First of all, can we go back to the city council section of that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we're there.
On the city, our city council part, I would like, I think I was laughing, I would like us to think about going more paperless than we are. Redwood City City Council uses iPads for their staff reports, for their agendas, for their schedules, and they save over, I think it's $36,000 a year. Now, they're a bigger council, they're a bigger staff, and all that stuff, but it's very effective. If you're not in the room, you get your iPad and you have all your stuff in front of you. You won't have to have it sent to you or printed or mailed or any of those things. So, I'd like us to investigate that as one thing. And then, before the city manager leaves, the city manager part, I'd like us to make sure that either, I don't know how to do it, but I think we need to look at having an assistant for her, either assistant city manager, or assistant to the city manager, or something. Her executive assistant retired, she doesn't have that support, she has all the burden of the Glenview fire to do, she has the city stuff, she has all the budget things that we do, and all the things that we want to do in addition to what we usually do. So, I know it's not in the budget, she didn't put it in, but I suggest we need to discuss that, have her come back to us with how to figure it out. So, those are my two comments.
Thank you. Just so you know, I've discussed this with the city manager too, in our weekly, daily meetings, and so I think it would be good to bring something like that back. I know it's been very difficult, and it's fine to try to segregate what we've been doing for Glenview and what we're doing for the city, but there is some type of a nebulous cost there that we can't just put our fingers on. You can't ask the manager, or Public Works, or Fire, or anybody else, to work until 11:00 in Glenview and then automatically switch at 11:01 to the City of San Bruno. We're losing time, we're losing efforts on both counts. That's worth something, and so I think the manager should, should bring some proposals back to try to remedy those particular situations.
Through, through the chair, just to add, if, if we're looking to that, we also have a sergeant that has been taken off the street and servicing his role in order to assist with the endeavor, the NTSB investigation. So, if we're going to look at one segment, I would ask that we look at all those areas that are equally been affected by some service reductions and not being able to focus on the day-to-day operations of the city.
Great. If, if I might respond? I think this is a, as the council has identified, this is a big issue that affects probably several different aspects of our organization, and one which, I've heard your direction and will be returning to the city council, probably more with something I would, I would term a reorganization or a organizational program for dealing with the issues that we're confronted with into the long-term.
Thank you. Irene, anything else on this?
No, that's all, thank you.
Great. And please don't hesitate at any point where, where you remember something, or you're triggered by another part of the discussion, we're at your, your pleasure tonight to address any and all issues that are of interest to the city council. At this point, we will move on to the finance department. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to the city attorney, I'm so sorry.
That's just because you knew that. She does that to every new department person, every time. Welcome.
Well, I was gonna start out by saying that I'm pleased to be presenting my first budget to you as your new city attorney. I would like to thank my assistant, Bai, and especially the staff of the finance department, Ed, Kim, and Pack, thank you very much for giving me a crash course in how to put a budget together. So, on the first slide, let's just talk briefly about two budgets. You don't usually see the second one in a city attorney's presentation, but I'm doing one for you this evening, just as information. You'll note that the city attorney's covers my office and staff, and the general liability budget covers insurance premiums and claims expenses and settlements. Workers' compensation is separate, that's a .25 allocation, and we're not gonna talk about that one tonight. So, the first thing you'll notice about that slide is there's a downward trend across those three years, just as your city manager indicated, both for the city attorney budget and for the general liability budget. On the second slide, let's take a look at the city attorney's office. We, again, are continuing a three-year trend to reduce costs, do about a $7,000 savings this year. That's really a result of trimming some personnel and internal salary and benefit costs. We are, however, recommending a conservative approach to maintaining the budget for outside council. As you know, we can't really predict when we're going to need outside council. We don't necessarily use the full budgeted amount every year. In fact, we haven't used the full budgeted amount every year, but as you know, it doesn't mean we're going to use it. And so, since we can't predict, we'd like to maintain that at the, at the same level. And as your city manager already told you, that does not include outside council for the Glenview fire incident. The other point is that we do attempt to obtain as much cost recovery as possible from development projects, so that's one of the initiatives that we're continuing in the budget this year. We'll be busy this year coordinating the risk associated with Glenview fire, as your city manager has indicated. It's very complex, requires coordination with different entities that frankly are all doing this for the first time as well, so it's been quite challenging. We do hope to fully resolve the baykeeper and regional water quality control board cases, and then in addition, I'll be bringing you various ordinances that are in need of some update and revision. On the final slide, next slide, we are continuing a three-year trend to reduce all of the costs in the self-insurance and liability fund. And why is that? It really comes from a combination of reduced insurance premiums and also some reduced claims expenses, which is good news. And in fact, I attended the ABAG board meeting just last week, and the City of San Bruno's experience modification claims history compares pretty favorably to that of other cities, so I was pleased to see that. We also do have a pretty effective internal program, which, which we run to recover costs where negligent third parties damage our property or injure our employees. And this year, we've recovered over $25,000 in that program. This coming year, we're gonna do our best to continue reducing those risks through best management practices, reducing claims and settlement costs if possible, and then we'll also evaluate our current mix of insurance and liability services and bring back any proposed changes to you. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair? Just one quick question. You make comment about the outside council, which is to retain what was in last year's budget. If we take all the various departments, and case are allocated, what would the overall dollar amount be projected in this budget, 11, 12, for overall outside legal assistance, or whatever the words you want to counsel?
I believe the number, I'm gonna tell you the number from memory, and then I'll look it up to make sure, is $155,000.
That's in your proposed budget, correct?
That is correct.
But, as far as other departments, is there anything allocated from the other departments or divisions that may, would increase that cost for legal aspects?
So, for some reason, oh, that just went off. I believe that there are allocations in some of the other funds for outside legal services. For example, you'll see numbers in cable, in wastewater, and some of those enterprise funds that have separately allocated legal costs associated with those. And those are not included in, in, those are included in this number, they're broken out separately.
We will have that for you tomorrow night.
That's okay.
We, we can provide that tomorrow night. That includes all of the enterprise funds, all of the, all of the outside council, wherever it's distributed within the budget.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
And now, before we go to the finance department, we're gonna go to the city clerk.
My budget is pretty much the same as- It's been, except for I have an increase of $80,000 to cover the election. And it's a high figure, but unless there is a state or a federal election associated with the November election, we pretty much have to carry the cost of the election. We share it with a few other cities, but it's high. So, if we're really lucky, maybe we won't have an election and we could save the $80,000. But, otherwise, my budget pretty much is the same as last year. Any questions?
Any questions of the city clerk?
No.
Irene?
No, just, Carol and Mark, I put out the notices about the meeting here, but nobody's knocked on our door, so.
I can't imagine why. And I will look into the iPad. I, I saw where Redwood City did save 36,000. We would never save 36,000, 'cause it doesn't cost that, but I will do some research on that for you.
Great, thank you.
Through, through the chair?
Yeah.
Carol?
Yes.
Does the school district contribute to any of the, the election cost?
No. No.
I guess the follow-up would be, why?
Why not?
Why not? I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a regular-
If they have an election, they pay for everything that they do. I'm not paying for anything of their election, and they're not paying for any of ours. So, when they conduct an election, they do pay for their election.
Okay, so, when, I heard your statement saying that if there's an election, we, we take care of all the costs.
And I just, it's because if we were, so it's, I'm sure it's something that's gonna be in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other things?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll go into the finance department. First of all, I wanna acknowledge the fact that, as Mark did earlier, I have, I'm blessed with a wonderful team, and many of the members contributed to the preparation of this budget, including Kim Pack and Darlene here, who's sitting in the audience, so I'm very grateful for all the good work that they do. So, finance department consists of two divisions, the administrative division and the revenue services division. Administrative division does such things as preparation of the budget and doing the year-end close and doing the CAFR. The revenue services division does the utility billings, including the garbage service billings that we do. Our budget is relatively flat, but mostly increases, again, attributable to the fact that we had the purse rate increases in the miscellaneous side, you know, it actually worked out to be about 20-plus percent, so the primary driver in terms of our costs increases already as a result of the purse increases there. In terms of other elements besides our base budget, what we're proposing for the 11, 12 year is a new work effort, which is to update our cost allocation plan. This cost allocation plan was last done back in 2005, '06, so it's, it's over five years, and standard practice is that we update them approximately five years. So, we're recommending to the city council to allocate resources to update this plan, which is used to calculate the cost of administrative services departments, and that, which is then assigned to all support, all the operating departments by May, including all the various enterprise funds. So, it's, it's important that that plan is updated so that it's reflective of the staff efforts that are placed in the various elements within the organizations. So, the estimated cost of that cost allocation plan update is approximately $15,000. So, again, that's not based, built into the budget yet, it would be a separate request and specific authorization from the city council if we were to add it into the budget for the Tuesday adoption meeting there. The upcoming goals for the 11, 12 year, obviously, in our ledger, if I may, we'll continue to go through the financial recovery efforts associated with the Glenview tragedy. The other element, or the other work items that we have for the upcoming year is to look at tax increment financing for the redevelopment agency for priority projects that the city council has identified. And then lastly, as we do for the CAFR, we submitted, the CAFR we submitted actually for a budget, for a, an award, and we like to do the same thing for the budget. And so, there are some best practices associated with that, with the association called the California Society of Municipal Affairs. So, that's one thing we would, we are planning to do for the upcoming year, to add some other elements into the budget, which will include, actually, some policies, things like what are the, identify specifically, what are the, for instance, city council policies in terms of budgeting, what are the city council policies in terms of reserves, policies in terms of capitalization assets? So, all, those elements would be things that we will wanna include, and we'll, again, follow some of the best practices that's done by other agencies in terms of meeting requirements of this award there. I'll also talk a little bit about the treasurer's budget there. Treasurer's budget is relatively modest, but there is a change, so say that with the treasurer's budget, and that change is as a result of the increase in bank fees that we currently are, are being assessed with our current financial institution. And that works out to be, on an annual basis, it works out to be now $24,000. Previously, it was a very modest amount, and we were really getting the benefit of having very substantial reduced fees, if I may. So, the $24,000 is highly comparable to what the market is in terms of bank service charges. So, one, one thing that we can consider is that now they're kinda in the even playing field in terms of compared to other financial institutions. We could conceivably go out to the market and do an RFQ and see whether or not there's, you know, good, you know, potentially other financial institutions that would be able to offer similar services with, you know, potentially better pricing. So, that, that would be one item that we could consider. But certainly, in, in terms of the budget for the city treasurer, there is an increase there specifically because of the banking services. I'll take any questions for the, for the budgets for the finance department and/or the city treasurer's department.
Any questions?
Through the chair. Real quick, I've just noticed that the postage obviously went up in both the finances significantly. Also, there's a new item on public notices, even though it's $710, but a publication of annual city financial report for SEO.
I'm sorry, I didn't spell out, SEO is the State Controller's Office. So, there's a requirement from the State Controller's Office that, once we complete our financial transactions for year-end, that we actually publish that. So, we, we did that this past year and will continue to do that.
And then, last item is on page 95, contract services. There's, it's, it seems like it's up about $15,000. Significant seems to be for credit card fees for utility payments. Last year, I think it was around 36,000, now it's at 50-plus thousand?
Correct. So, as more and more people opt to pay online, we're actually seeing greater transition from mailing in payments, paying us by mail or in person. So, there's a, there's a cost associated with processing those credit card fees. So, it's actually reflecting what our actual experience has been. We've been under-budgeting for the last year-plus, so that's really what, what that increase is for.
Any questions, Irene?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Members of the council, good evening. The private departments budget adhered to the hold the line guideline set forth by the city manager. The department budget did increase approximately 3% compared to last year's budget, and this was primarily due to increases in personnel cost. All operational light items were held flat with two exceptions in the tools and equipment accounts. We did budget last year for replacement hose, and again, this year. This request was based upon replacing our double jacket wildland hose with single jacket hose. We also have mandatory testing of our self-contained breathing apparatus, do their five-year hydrodynamic testing, and lastly, we have an agreement for- And lastly, we have an agreement for gas monitor calibration and maintenance service by a private provider. Goals for two thousand eleven and twelve include continuation of seeking shared fire service opportunities. As the City Council is aware, the fire merger study has been ongoing for over two years. I believe that we are at a decision point in the next month or two to recommend to the City Council whether or not to continue the effort or to make other recommendations going forward. Another goal is to seek opportunity, expand the central training consortium to reduce costs in San Bruno. Effective July one, Foster City has entered into the agreement, and several other agencies are showing interest. Also, to complete standardized operation policies and procedures for the department, we have made progress in certain phases, but we need to finalize the document. Our first cert class graduated in May, and we plan on having the next class in the fall and another following one in the spring. We also want to develop a hazard mitigation plan for open space areas and coordinate, coordinate this with the Glenview rebuild project and CAL FIRE. And obviously, we'll continue to seek grant opportunities focusing on training and equipment. That concludes my report. Be answered, answer any questions.
Chief, is there anything that, after the Glenview incident, you found out that we were missing from a physical standpoint, or, I know personnel was, was a whole other issue because it was mutual aid, but from a physical standpoint for our engine and truck?
Not, not really. We, we, one of the ideas we have, you know, it's part of the hose replacements, include nozzles and get some high-performance nozzles included in the replacement program, and besides a helicopter.
Probably talk to us in future years.
I thought so.
Right. We can get those little ones at Dan Fran, they play around. Any other questions of Fire?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Irene.
Okay. Chief, on page one hundred and nineteen, you talk about suspension of the hose replacement program, except for emergency replacement of damaged hoses. You want to explain why you did that? Doesn't-
Our typical replacement program probably includes between eight hundred and a thousand feet a year that we try to replace, and, you know, the hose does expire its useful life due to, due to breakage or leakage or whatever. We suspended that, you know, we monitored it carefully for the last two budgets. Last year, we ended up spending the twenty-five hundred dollars on replacement of large diameter hose. This year, we see a need to replace our wildland hose, inch-and-a-half wildland hose, but the risk we run is, is replacing a large amount of hose at that one time.
So... I, for one, would rather you not do that. I'd rather you replace the hoses before they, they really need it. Is there, is there a compromise that we don't kill the budget, but replace more hose than you've budgeted for? I noticed you budgeted for, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars in here. Can we, can we, I mean, is there, you also note in here that if, if the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. So is there a compromise between spending twenty-five thousand dollars a year or not spending enough?
Well, certainly, I could appreciate spending more and replacing a limited amount of hose on a timely basis, on an annual basis, so we don't run into that big head in one year.
I, I'd like to recommend looking at that. It'd make me feel a lot better. The other thing I note, I couldn't find anywhere in here, is the Emergency Operations Center. I know you've pushed hard and worked really hard these last few years to get it up to where it should be, and thank goodness you did, because we used it extensively, obviously, at the Glenview Fire. But I'm wondering if there is some, has some thought gone into equipment replacement? Is there different things we needed that we shouldn't, that we, is there other items that we needed that we didn't have? I realize the mayor just asked you that, but I didn't get to hear all your answers. So those two things I'd like us to think about.
The Fire Department doesn't have a particular line item for the EOC Center. I think, you know, we have kind of done a maintenance approach with it as, as things have come up, but I think it would be prudent to have a line item for the Emergency Operations Center.
Yeah, I, I think we should, but, you know, there's one more thing, I'm sorry, there's one more thing I wanted to ask about. You also talked about reducing mandatory training, which I understand, but also you talked about not funding any conferences or meetings, and I understand why you did that, but I'm wondering if you might give yourself a little leeway? There's always things out there that you find out at a conference that you find out no other place. Plus, I would think that you would be in demand at conferences to, for people to pick your brain about what you learned through the Glenview Fire.
For a fee?
So, I think you should relook at that as well.
Surely can, yeah. I think the City Manager's been pretty clear on direction, is for a fee. Wouldn't do that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
To the Chair, on that item that Irene was asking, can you explain why hose replacement would not be part of equipment reserve?
You know, we looked at it, and it was really, it was just under five thousand dollars typically, it was between four and five thousand, so it didn't enter the equipment reserve piece. At the prices right now, it might, might qualify to be on.
I would, I would just add, it's, it's similar to the program that we use in the Police Department, where typically, not this year, but typically, we include two police patrol vehicles in the operating budget because it's a use them up where amount all the time type of program, and it, at a much lower dollar amount. The hose replacement program is, has been treated previously in the same manner. We can certainly look at, what we're hearing the Council say is whether perhaps we might want to look at being more aggressive, and what's the best way to do that?
Yeah, I, I'm not following why a small expenditure would not be included in equipment reserve. I understand we want, we have, we want to flatten that bud, flatten that budget, but we have another resource, you know, to, to take care of, you know, to take care of your resources. So, I mean, I'm not really clear on why we, we do take, if, if there's a concern about the balance in their equipment reserve, that's one thing. But why are we taking patrol vehicles out of the general, out of the operating budget, you know, and not strictly out of the equipment reserve? So.
To the Chair. I've had the hose on one and training on as well, so we'll start as, we'll maybe end as Irene began. Interestingly enough, I came by last night to ask some questions on the budget, and I saw them testing the hoses outside. And what was interesting is that they're labeled, and you can see the year. So I can tell you that there is some of the hose that is there that, and I hate to say it, but it goes back to when I was in high school. So that is now a long time ago.
Couple of years ago.
And so I'm thinking about that and going, okay, so shouldn't that be replaced at some point? There actually was a leak in one of the hoses they were testing, that was in the center of it, so obviously, you can't cut it and redo it. So that was, by watching that yesterday, as I was walking in City Hall, that was interesting, and I didn't realize how dated some of the hose is. But I also thought that out of the fifteen thousand dollars that was received for Station Fifty-two, did we not replace some hose out of those, those monies?
We still have a, a balance with that, with that fund, with the air conditioning that's been installed at Station Fifty-two, and we did purchase, it's close on mine right now, but we did have it expanded earlier. So, but there is, there is money still left that we could certainly take a look at.
Okay. And then on the training, there was last budget, line item six-four-zero-one, it's not in here now, was for professional services, which was for emergency plan training. So that's been taken out, so I echo that as far as training, I think is critical, which I think was hopefully what led to some of our success, not all, because obviously, it took everybody else from various departments to make this a success. But that was one, and then I just also noticed, under the gas and oil, there is no increase for the Fire Department for that, but in almost every other department, there are increases for the most part, and I would assume that obviously, the engines and trucks get some use, so I don't know if that needs to be reviewed.
We'll look into that, because we generally did make some adjustments in the gas and oil lines across all departments.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions for Fire? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Before I go through the, before I go through the five division budgets and two of the supplemental items, I did want to go back for a second and address Councilwoman O'Connell's question about the EOC, and I would support the idea of having a separate line item or a separate budget for the EOC, but I did want to address the fact that, that post, within, within the last six months, there have been some of the items that were realized that we did need in the EOC during the disaster, or would have been very helpful, and that those were handled through the facilities budget that way, and the IT staff, Tenzin staff, Eric Jackson specifically, as well as the guys with the Facilities Division, made some of the improvements, a cable antenna on top of the, of City Hall, so we can have a direct shot of line of sight to Sutro Tower in San Francisco, so if there's any problems with the cable, we can pick up the feed that way. A few other small items, but those were handled through the facilities budget as of now. And I would also like to, as, as I begin the work on the Community Services Budget, I would also like to acknowledge the three managers that assisted with that, Assistant Library Director John Alita, Recreation Services Managers Danielle Brewer and Wendy Mines, and they're all here as well tonight to help put this together, so I do appreciate their help with all of that. As you see, the Community Services Budget is there before you, the summary piece is up there. The additional expenses are due, as, as the Finance Director said, to the CAL PERS increases on there. That does not show, it is in the budget binder, though, that the Division also has an additional fifty-nine thousand dollars of revenue that is being projected for this coming year. The Recreation Division Budget, the, the, the single significant budget change to that is the addition of the, the After-School Education and Safety Program, ACES program, and that's a collaborative program, or it's a program that we are doing as a contractor to the, to the Seamanville Park School District. I do want to point out that the revenues numbers and the expense numbers here, one-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars of revenues, ninety-five thousand dollars of expenses, they do differ from what is in your booklet, and I do apologize for the discrepancies there. These are the updated numbers after the budget, budget binder was put out and finalized. We have had additional conversations with the school district about the, the grants and the way they break out the grant at the district level. We will be bringing a new agreement back to the Council within the next month or two to look at, at the program for school years two thousand eleven, twelve, as well as school years two thousand twelve, thirteen, and we will have that back to you fairly soon. The large items that the Recreation Division's going to be focusing on for the coming year will be the continued funding of, and this, and the work on the synthetic grass field project at Lyons Field, expanding the after-school programming, of which ACES is a portion of that. We continue to work with the Glenview area residents. We are part of the support of the Long-Term Recovery Committee, as well as HR Director Tammy Yuki has been working with that committee as well. We will be having the, we will be coordinating with the Councilmembers and then with the community, community members that are interested in participating in the committee to commemorate the one-year event, and to come up with something that is appropriate and also in, in keeping with the wishes and the needs of the, of the area itself. And the last item in there, which I will come back to in a little while, we will begin the planning of the city's Centennial Celebration. The Parks Budget is the next item. There are no significant operational changes for that, or budgetary changes for that. As the Council may remember, we did receive some ABAG Risk Management Grant Funds a previous year, and we purchased a new tree inventory program. All of the trees that are under city maintenance control, either as street trees, as park trees, or as open space trees that are adjacent to any properties, have all been inventoried over the last year, and we are, are entering that data. We are building up a wonderful work history of that, and it will help us much further as we move forward. That is a portion of the city's tree management plan that we will be bringing to the Council this year, a full and comprehensive look of, of the policies and practices related to tree maintenance within the city. The next division budget we have is the Senior Budget, and the budgetary change here that's listed is, this will be the first full year of operation with a part-time Recreation Services Recreation Services Manager Wendy Mines retired partway through last year. You wouldn't know it because of the devotion and the caring that she has to the programs and to the, to the, to the guests at the Senior Center, but there will be a, a budget savings as this year, she will be a part-time employee rather than a full-time employee moving forward. I would also point out, associated with the Senior Center, a lot of the revenues are grant-funded, and as we continue to move forward, one of the trends that we're seeing is less and less senior centers or senior programs in the area for budgetary reasons. Our staff, Wendy, as well as, as the rest of her staff, have done an excellent job of working with the county on some of the county, state, federal grant programs. We continue to get one-time only funds, there're money that is available during the fiscal year, that is not budgeted in here, but very often during fiscal year. There's additional money that's let out to, to senior center operations, as one of the few senior centers that's still in full existence, or in existence in a full capacity. Our staff has been extremely capable and successful of acquiring those for our use and the benefits of our program participants. A couple of the large goals that you see for the coming year, replacement of the twenty-one passenger van, and this is an item that will be brought to you again also probably within the next month or so. The van is in need of, if we do not replace the van by the end, by the end of the calendar year two thousand eleven, there will be some emissions requirements that are put into there, and we will be spending a lot of money on a very old van. We have developed a plan that we will be bringing to you shortly on replacement of that van. It will incorporate money from the Equipment Reserve, as well as other outside money from the, from the Senior Nutrition Trust Fund. And this year, we celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Senior Center, and the staff is planning to have a wonderful celebration, and more details of that to follow too. The Libraries Budget, there's no internal budgetary changes or nothing of significance for the Library Division. The, the potential change is the impacts from the state's budget and the, on the city's library system. The state library fund is being considered by the governor as one of the areas, or by the state legislature, as one of the areas of reduction at that level, and its impacts back to the city will be approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars is what the current estimate is as they've done their latest revisions. What this really means to give a, kind of a brief history of the impacts, the city has a state library fund account, and we've been generating fifty-seven thousand dollars of revenue from the state into that account for the last many years. We've been using about seventy-five thousand dollars of that, so essentially, we've been drawing down that account by about eighteen thousand dollars annually for several years. Last year, the City Council opted to take an additional twenty-one thousand dollars out of that account to keep the library open on Fridays, so we were looking at thirty-nine thousand dollar reduction. If we look at the, if, if the state impact, or the latest state impact, does go through with a full thirty-seven thousand dollar figure- with a full $37,000 figure, we would be looking at $76,000 drawdown for the current year. There is slightly less than $600,000 left in the account, and so at the current rate, we'd be looking at a little bit over seven years at, for that account to be able to handle the drawdown. One of the good news is, one of our goals for this year is to complete the implementation of the RFID technology. This is radio frequency identification. We have started using it in the library in the first form, all of the materials have been tagged, but essentially, the patrons, when you check your materials, you place them on a pad, the pad will beep, you, all of your materials are checked out, you can leave. So there's going to be a lot less need for staff time to just handle the basic functions of checking out material in future years, and we think that this will go a long way towards keeping that state library fund extend its life into the future. And this item also is one we'll be coming back to with at a meeting for the RFID. The buildings and facilities budget, there is no significant change to it. Oh, I'm sorry, the other library item, the, the other goal I did want to point out is in this next year, through some grant funds, we will be adding the wheelchair lift to the basement of the library, and that will make the library fully ADA accessible. And the, again, that's another item that we'll be coming to you very shortly. Buildings and facilities, there are no significant changes with that. The library, bringing that into compliance with the ADA is one of the items that facility's working on with the library staff. We will be having, we will be putting together a goal schedule of carpets and the resilient floors in city buildings. At this point, we are still one custodian short. There's one, there's one vacancy that will be filled within the next couple of months. There's a transfer coming, a previous custodian who is now working in the Public Services Department has requested to come back, so when the Public Services Department can replace him, he will be back, we will finally be back at full staff in the custodial department. The first of the two items, the two supplemental items I have for you, and I guess I need to apologize to Councilmember O'Connell, I do have a written document here, and we don't have it on the PowerPoint.
Olive.
Randy, what we could do though is email it, so that in case Councilmember O'Connell has any questions, we could discuss them tomorrow.
But this is the item of, of changing the schedule for focus, going from four times annually to three. It would be supplemented with inclusions in the recreation brochure. The schedule that's here, and then this is what I will be able to email to Councilmember O'Connell later on, we, we've set up the schedule to dovetail so that the three issues of the recreation activity guide will, will dovetail with the three additions of focus. At any time, we can put in two pages, four pages of information in the recreation activity guide. They have the same circulation methods, mails to each home, placed in city counters, website, et cetera, et cetera. We would be saving about $7,000 annually on the printing and mailing costs to reduce the one issue, and other than a little bit of staff time it takes to, the, the staff time's a little bit of a wash in there, in terms of if we do use a lot of the, if we, if we fully use the recreation activity guide, there'll be a little bit of staff time that way. We would save about 30 hours of staff time on the one issue of focus that we do not send out. So our recommendation to council would be to save the $7,000, go from four opportunities a year to get information out to the public, to essentially six opportunities per year, three through the focus, three through the activity guides, and that would be the first recommendation on the focus. The other item, the other supplemental item of discussion is that the city of San Bruno was incorporated on December 23rd, 1914, as we get closer to the 100-year anniversary. We should start thinking about how we want to handle that. There's going to be several policy questions that, that may come up before council. Many of the other cities on the peninsula have already turned 100 years old, and we've looked at many different types of celebrations that they've had. Some of them have been a single event where we're going to, this is the day we're going to celebrate our 100th year, it was either on the date or maybe on a weekend next to. Some of the cities have had three or four events during the year and incorporating some of their, their standard events. We have the, the tree lighting and doing something special for the tree lighting or the Easter egg hunt, those things, and incorporating the theme of a centennial at that way. Some cities have done a wide variety of special events and celebrated for a full year, either from birthday number 99 through birthday 100, or from birthday 100 through 101. And some of those, those are some of the items that council will be able to discuss in the upcoming months. In terms of a budget item, one of the, one of the, one of the ways that some of the cities have handled it, it, not necessarily for the celebration itself, but also just as seed money. For example, if, if there is a, some cities have had a vintage fashion show as part of the centennial celebration, showing what the costume pieces were like 100 years ago and having a, a lunch or a dinner as part of the fashion show. Those are items that you can sell tickets to, sell admission, people come for the lunch to the show, and that's a revenue generating event. Some of the events such as, as parades, there's no revenue associated with those. So to fund some of those items, what some cities have done is to put away a little bit of money each year for a couple of years leading up to the celebration, even though we may not know exactly what the celebration is at this point, rather than taking a, a larger amount later on. So discussions with the city manager, we were talking about maybe if there was about $10,000 placed into the 11, '12 budget, and then another $10,000 into the 12, '13 budget. Just as we start having discussions about the scope of the, of the event or events, that might help to kind of feather in the expenses rather than having a large impact all at one time. And I'd be happy to take any questions about any of the divisions or the two supplemental items.
Any questions? Ken?
I think it is smart and prudent to put some money away for the centennial. I think it's a great idea to combine, to, to do the focus and the brochure and all that because, and I'm, I'm not really following how you're going to do that, but are you going to combine the two publications together?
When they're combined, when, when we do it as recreation activity guide, right now there already is a page just inside the front cover that talks about city meeting schedules and who's on the council or who's on the commission. We would just make the next few pages city information, just like the focus is, here's city news or city information, and so the brochure would...
And, and I think it's smart because it's, it's news of the city, and when, you know, if, if people, you have your, your residents that see the, the recreation guide each quarter, and if they participate in that, they'll keep it. Those that don't participate, we know what they tend to do, but if it's just, if it's, has a different title on it saying San Bruno News or San Bruno Community Activities and News, you know, they tend to keep it around for a while and look at it. As far, as far as the, the programs and the budget and things, I think, and you've, because of September 9th, we've, your department has, has shown, shown some of these characteristics that I think the community, we need to start getting the community more involved in some of these things, and part of your programs as far as park cleanup, trees, even libraries, library services, I think, I think we start need, we, we should start developing some community programs that can help with that. Not necessarily just service clubs, but I want to take a book out of Irene's Operation Clean Sweep, that's once a year. Maybe there's a program that we can get volunteers to adopt parts of the park. Don't put them in danger and put them on median strips or anything, but I mean, there are parts of the park. I mean, I've heard some concerns about the brand-new park at Catalpa, you know, that it is, you know, not getting as much care as, you know, that they feel that it should. Maybe that's just a weekend deal for a, for a group, a youth group or something to go take a look at it, but it needs to be initiated either by us or by, you know, by a city department. And I think that would get more people to get more involved, instead of just with, you know, a volunteer commission or something, or, you know, it's just something that they can help in their own neighborhood. So I know we've talked about it before, I know there's just concentrating on service organizations or, but I think there are people out there that, you know, that enjoy coming out to Operation Clean Sweep that would like to do more throughout the year, and I think that's, you know, should stem from your department.
Anyone else? Irene?
Through the chair.
Anything on community services? You're on.
Oh, thank you. I have to agree with Ken about the recreation center and focus together. I think it's a great idea, you're going to get six chances to get people's, get the city's information out to people. My concern is that people who get the recreation center brochure, look at the front, say, "I don't do any of those things," and they toss it. So I, I agree with Ken, we need to redesign the front of it or maybe the back of it, so it's one of those things that you flip over one size one way and one size the other or something, but that is an issue, I think. As far as the 100-year anniversary, I think it's, I'm looking forward to it, in whatever capacity. I think the city as a whole needs to have something positive and good and fun to look forward to. One, I just want to mention an idea. One of the things we tend to do is look for big donations for things, and I think it is a good idea to put a little money aside as a city to do, as seed money or whatever we need it for. But I think people like to give a little and have their name someplace. We've all been to Costco or Lucky's or someplace where you donate a dollar, you put your name on a thing, and it goes up on a wall. Maybe we could do something where people can add a dollar to their utility bill or strictly donations, and do some things like that and put up, put up their names or do something that they get recognition that they're part of the city, even if they can only donate a dollar. So I'd like, and even maybe do online. I know people pay their library fines, I'm one of them, pay their library fines online. Maybe we can do something with that way too. So those, those are my two comments on that.
Rico?
That's it.
Starting on recreation services, these two items, the regular part-time is up $64,000, which my belief is that's attributed to the new park site program.
Correct.
And sometimes I wish, and I've brought this up before, that there was some way to make a little notation, so I realize it's an expenditure, but really, we are recouping the costs for this, which I guess is in the, the revenue aspect, but sometimes to, people who are reading this, or they go to the library and they check it out, they're going, now, I know they're not like me who go and check everything, but maybe, but you're going, wow, $64,000, what happened? Well, really, there's a clear explanation for it. It's a new added service to the community, is to assist the junior high school level. However, it's a cost that is being recouped, and that's just in, in general terms, because if you go to the next page and under supplies and equipment, I, 6204 line item, it's $40,000. I believe I didn't see that in last year's budget, so that's new.
Correct.
But however you're, it's stating here, which is supported by a school district grant, so I guess that's going to be offset as well. So I guess my, my thought process, and again, maybe this isn't the best accounting practices, but in essence, just in this one, these two pages, a person might see this and go, wow, it went up $104,000. Well, no, not really. It's the same thing when we were trying to identify police overtime with the strike force. Somebody comes up to the mic and says, yes, but you're paying them $500,000. Well, no, 320 of that came from, backed from the state. I think sometimes that needs to be noted, just so that folks realize that. Let me just go through these real quick. I know one in building and maintenance, what I was looking as regular service salaries, I'm sorry, on page 254, it's listed as $395,910. Now, last year, it was listed as $376,404, which is an increase of $19,000. In most items that I'm noticing, under salaries, there is a decrease. So that stood out to me as a significant increase, and I wasn't quite clear why unless I did my math wrong or I, I read it wrong.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask either Beck or John to correct me if I'm wrong on this. Part of this was the reallocation of the time of some of our staff. There's no increase in the staff. Some of the, the park staff, the building facilities division, full-time staff is made up of the custodians plus, plus one member of the park staff. And as you see the yellow truck going around, there's usually two guys in that that, very often they take care of building items, air conditionings, windows, doorknobs, all of those types of items, as well as helping out in the parks in need be with irrigation systems, replacing benches or fences or those things. We went through this year and looked at how much time they really spend there and, and addressed the issue that way. So there's actually no additional staffing in buildings and facilities. It was more of a redistribution to more accurately reflect the workload that the, that the crews do out there.
So would that be also is why the, in the parks division, parks maintenance, there's a $22,000 increase to the regular salaries, and is that step increases or is that based because of allocations as well?
I would assume that's from step increases.
Maybe, maybe, how about, how about we do this? We just take down the, the question and we can get answers.
We'll bring it back to you.
Later, is that, is that okay with everybody?
We can bring it back to you tomorrow.
Is that okay? Doesn't have to be tomorrow, but, but thank you. Honestly, I think that was about it.
Michael?
Couple of comments. One, I think Councilmember Medina made a really good point about the, the notes, and I think that, in, that comment goes not just for your section, but I think in general, there were a few sections in there where I kind of had to scratch my head and think back, okay, well, yeah, I think this was covered this way or that way, and maybe some of those details weren't in there. There was a lot of information in here to try to digest, so anything that, that staff could do to highlight certain issues that specifically have an impact on the numbers, I think would be greatly helpful, because there is a lot of information in here. Regarding the, the focus and the, the brochure that's going out, do you have any thoughts on actually identifying real users of the brochure and limiting the delivery to those people? And in general, I, I know there, there's a lot of senior programs and a lot of children's programs, so if there are households without seniors, without children, those are probably the people that are tossing it in, in the recycle bin.
Several cities have tried that. They've eliminated the recreation activity guide. They have gone to direct mailing to their customer base, and every one of them within the first six months returns an activity guide, because there's so many, there's so many changes in the households, there's so many people that pick it up and, or give it to somebody else, and once you don't get it, it's not in front of you. Even the online, some have tried to do just an all-online catalog and looking at a postcard. When you get the recreation activity guide at home, people typically will flip through it, or a lot of people will, will flip through it, and you know that you're signing up for your exercise class. I'm going to be doing that, and I'm going to find my exercise class. In the process of flipping through it, you also might see something that's of interest to your spouse, to your kids, to a neighbor next door, something that you've always wanted to take that class, and you didn't even know it was offered. So every agency that we know of that has tried to do something similar to that has realized it results in a large decrease in revenues, more than the cost savings of producing and mailing the activity guide in the first place, and they've all resorted back. And they've all resorted back to, to having the, the traditional model.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to, glad to know that you've thought about that. And, and regarding the, um, the centennial, again, I think that's a great idea. I agree with everyone that, uh, really appreciate you being proactive on that. And probably the sooner we can start getting some details around that, the better. And maybe we can, uh, bring in some other groups that may wanna contribute and be part of that. So, great job.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Mary, it was just on the focus 'cause I, I think I, I kind of share what Irene was saying as well. Is that I, I, I believe the focus is a great source of information that goes to all residents. And I really believe that a lot of folks do read that. And they find the information, the questions, the responses, the contact numbers are really of a value and a benefit. I think on the average, when folks get the recreational activity guide, if really you're not engaged in any of those programs or activities, I don't know that you tend to, no pun intended, focus as much on it. You may put it to the side, you may recycle it, um, you may just keep it as a reference piece. So either, somehow it needs to change. You're also talking about three times in lieu of four, so that it's an extra time. So it only goes out, not quarterly, but three times a year. So therefore, that's a quarter that we don't have an opportunity to engage the citizens of this community in updating them on activities, programs, positive attributes that are occurring in their community, answering their questions. So I, I am reluctantly somewhat concerned in regards what the value we get today. Will that be minimized by our approach tomorrow?
I'm, like, a couple cents in on this, too. I mean, I think it's a good idea to consolidate the information so that we just don't have recreation activities in one publication and then having city news in another applica, uh, another publication. This is our only form of communicating with our residents. If you're thinking that people are watching us on cable, if you think that they're putting on on Channel One and keeping up on what's going on, you know, then we're out of it. We've gone through trying to stuff stuff in the, in utility bills and all that stuff. But you know, I think we oughta be looking at more, more written material for the community, either sent by ourselves or included in a, uh, you know, in everyday publication, like the Daily Journal or something. There's some partnering with that. They're printing away. Why not get, you know, give them the hard copy and, you know, and include it in, in something there and just pay them for that? I think we shouldn't just think about saving money, but think about how we can communicate better with, with the residents, you know? And I think, I, that, it just occurred to me that the concern would be, geez, I haven't seen the focus for, you know, for a few months. We used to get it more often, you know, maybe, uh, there's, there's cutbacks or something. You know, maybe things aren't as important, so...
You know, and just 'cause our, our city clerk's here, and she obviously gets all the citizens in the information line. Carol, do you have any gauge whether the focus is something that you get calls on or people really engage, do you, or, or on the recreation guide? I mean, you, you're here every day. You, you would know best.
No, we do. We have people that comment on receiving the focus at the utility counter.
I'm sorry, Carol, I can't hear you.
She's not saying anything.
I'm not, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, very much.
Okay. Uh, we have people come to the counter and comment on the utility counter about focus, and then we get phone calls about focus. And they do, they do read it.
Thank you, Carol.
Through the chair.
Yes, Irene.
Thank you. I think what, what might serve everyone is if we try it for a year this way. We'll have three publications of focus, three publications of the recreation services, uh, publication. And what my concern was that people won't open it. So there, there must be a way to get them to open it to know that focus is inside. That's, that was my concern about doing it. So why don't we give it a try for a year? And if it, if we get bad, uh, comments back, or, then we can change next year. But to me, it's a way to get information out for six times with less cost. And we just have to be clever about how we get people to open it up, to know that focus is inside. That's all. Uh, that, that's my comment.
Thank you. Uh, and my two cents here, I have a tendency to agree with, uh, Councilmember Ibera that, and I guess this, I think focus is really important. And I like to see it go out as often as we can put it out, especially now. Especially now after what we've been through. I've found that people are reading it more and more to get updates, and they're more interested in their city and what we're, what we're doing. So I, I think at this point in time, it would be a mistake to cut it back. And maybe we could do that in the future, but something, there's something about getting something that you can, you can hold and you can read and you can get a little more up to date. A lot of people don't flip on, online to read about San Bruno. And I just think it's, it's, it's an important thing going forward, uh, especially in the situation we're in now, because we're in a special situation in San Bruno. And, uh, and I think that's important. That's my two cents. Anybody else have anything?
I have two cents, too.
Michael?
I, I'm gonna play the devil's advocate here, and, and this is just from my perspective. And, and it's interesting to hear the comments, and especially yours, Carol, because you're actually getting the feedback from the public. My perception clearly would have been that people are becoming more, I mean, they're self-segmenting, and because of the internet, and because you can, you can select the information that you wanna digest, that the printed publication is, is becoming less and less important. Now, I, I do get that, you know, having a piece of paper, something in your mail, you're gonna look at it. Um, but we do have other avenues. I, I get, uh, the email alerts now from the city regarding library activities and, and other. So, I mean, those things come to me. They're very focused. I mean, it's, it's exactly the information that I selected that's coming to me. We have, uh, services like the patch, which focus on community events. Uh, again, you go to the San Bruno patch, it's all San Bruno stuff. It, it identifies all the community events. Um, you can get email feeds from there as well. So I kinda had a different perspective. I, I totally respect, uh, the, the opinion of, of my colleagues up here. And I understand that there's probably still a very large segment. So, um, but, but, you know, I think that maybe in a few years, we're gonna see a trend moving away from that. So it's great that you're, that you're keeping an eye on it. And I think that you got some great feedback here from, from all of us.
It's a lot of two cents.
Taking, taking the entire dime, if I...
Right.
Did you want us to talk further on this, or?
Maybe, and just as a way to possibly facilitate the discussion, perhaps we can go back and mock up, um, an idea, a recreation activity guide. There would still be three focuses sent out a year. But I also hear some of the concern about, would people identify this as another focus? Would they understand that this is city news? And perhaps we can go back the way that Councilmember O'Connell suggested, by turning the back page over, as well as doing what some cities do on the front page about showing city news. And maybe we can present that to you and, and get your feedback from that. Could that be helpful?
Sounds great.
I like it.
That'd be helpful.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Next.
Just so that the council can, uh, think about organizing your time, uh, Mr. Acton will be presenting the Community Development Department budget along with the redevelopment agency budget. And that is the conclusion of what we're prepared for presentation tonight.
Great, thank you.
All right.
You're on.
Thank you and good evening. I know we're about two hours into this now, so I'll, I'll keep it brief. We've been waiting just for your presentation. Thank you, thank you. So these first two slides, similar to slides within the other departments. Not too many changes. You'll see a slight allocation difference between my time in planning and building, which is just more realistic how my time is spent. So some of my time will shift to the building division. Redevelopment, um, also consistent. I'll go more into redevelopment in a couple of slides for now. Within the planning division, um, obviously, within the last year, our biggest challenge and our biggest workload has been associated with the Glenview. First, the response, and now the rebuilding effort. I would still say over 50% of my staff's time is spent on the rebuilding applications. As you know, there was 38 homes destroyed. And what's unique about this is you don't, in San Bruno's history, we've never had 38 single-family home applications in one year for complete rebuild within an existing subdivision. So there's some unique challenge to, challenges to that, as well as, uh, there's, it's more time-consuming than your average application. Um, on the plus side, we've now gone back to our historical, um, number of use permits for single-family expansions. Back in 2001, 2002, we would have 20 to 25 larger single-family expansions during the boom years. We went up to 80, 85 of those. Now we're back down to more of a historical average, which I don't see changing until people's property values increase and people have equity in their homes to actually put into rebuilding and building second-story additions. Um, so some goals, continue to expedite the Glenview rebuild process. The city council adopted a great ordinance, a set of ordinance which helped people to rebuild, uh, more quickly. Uh, closely managed the, both the Treetops maintenance efforts over the next three months, as well as the rebuilding efforts, um, going forward. And of course, work on updating the zoning code in its entirety, as well as the transit corridor plan. Next slide, in the building inspection. Um, we do show some increased building and permit revenue, and that's associated with two things. That's the Glenview rebuild. Um, it's about $15,000 per home in rebuilding fees. And of course, the homeowners aren't paying that, but will be repaid through PG&E trust. And the second is Treetops renovation project. We're phasing that revenue in over a couple of years to more closely match when the work is actually being produced within our department and how we're seeing the revenue. And that's, and basically, those three things, similar Glenview, paid attention to Glenview. And one thing we're doing on everything, and one thing we've learned about through the Glenview rebuild process is really to have people understand the city's expectations for the construction period early on in the building permit process. And we've improved and will continue to approve our pre-construction process. Within redevelopment, I think you've heard the news that's gone back and forth. Will redevelopment be here? Will it not be here? The latest and greatest is that the assembly, um, both, both houses passed a bill, and they have not forwarded it to the governor for a signature yet. And I, there might be some political wrangling going on, whether or not it'll be forwarded to the governor for a signature. But it's basically two bills. The first bill kills all redevelopment agencies. So they would go away per the first bill. The second bill then allows redevelopment agencies to reactivate, if they pay a certain amount of money, into, uh, basically greater pass-throughs to the school districts. This would equate to a take for San Bruno. Uh, previously, our take was gonna be about 1.9 million. It would bring it up to 3.1 million. Then in subsequent years, it would go down to about $700,000. That's if the bill stays the same. You never know. Of course, the state could go in and once again try to take greater revenues. The, the positive side to this is that, based on current revenue projections, it wouldn't be an overwhelming, we would, we've, we would basically have enough money within the, the tax increment to cover that $3.1 million for that one year. The downside to that is it would delay a lot of the projects that we want to do and not keep the, the revenue local, which is the ultimate re, uh, goal of redevelopment. So we could spend our funds locally and generate and stimulate the local economy. Still with that, uh, uh, next slide. What we, the only real major budget change we see this year, there's, uh, something we've talked about before in several, both during the implementation plan, as well as at the mid-year budget, is some type of retail business incubator. As you know, there's a number of vacancies downtown. It's kind of two things going on there. Number one, the nature of retail has changed, where you don't have as many mom-and-pops-type stores taking up 2,500 to 5,000 square foot retail spaces. So what this would do is allow smaller ra, uh, retail spaces to be formed within some of those larger spaces, and also partner with a nonprofit who helps these businesses start. We have a lot of businesses in San Bruno, a high proportion of first-time business owners. And sometimes it's hard to make that transition from being a great baker to running a great bakery. And that's what some of these nonprofits do, is really to teach people how to run a business and be successful in their business within that first-year, second-year period, so they could be longstanding businesses within the city of San Bruno. So that's one of the goals. Another goal is to complete the transit corridor plan, as well as the EIR. The EIR should be released within the next month or so, um, with the 45-day review period. And then we're gonna have to think about the...
The budget, then, same, some, somewhat in the same fashion as my colleague here. And I saw that there was an increase, uh, or a, some ex, some dialogue on increasing the document imaging fees. And, and I could, for the life of me, I can never understand why, how we do it that way. Uh, I looked at the master fee schedule. We do a 3.25% charge based on the permit fee. And we're talking about copying documents. I've been to other cities, and they strictly put a charge on each piece of document. So why are we, I, I don't, I don't understand what, it seems like an arbitrary form of, uh, of, of charging for documenting fees when, you know, and, and it seems like we're coming up short. So, and then, and then possibly, since we're going to be getting into more, uh, electronic filings, you know, give some, uh, maybe incentive towards that, too.
Correct.
Um, it's my understand, it's my experience that document imaging is, is roughly, you know, on retail, about five, $5 a sheet, $5 a document. So, I mean, I know it's a $10,000, you know, item, but it just seems that we, we can get behind ourselves on that.
So we're not actually asking to increase the document imaging fee. What, what we've done in the past is we've collected the same document imaging fee, but we did not budget for actually scanning in those documents later. So we're just allocating the funds that we already have within the bank to cover the cost of the document imaging fee. Now, you do have a great point, you know, there is some cities that do do it per sheet scanning. We're basically looking at two things here. A, it's the scanning, and then B, it's the storage capacity to store this forever on our servers. So that's what it's covering. It's not just covering the scanning portion of it. But we could look into see how other cities are doing it. And it, one thing that's unique that San Bruno has is that we have all our documents online, which I think is a great asset for us to have, because I know for Glenview, and for instance, that helped a lot of people access their documents quickly. Uh, that's not available for other cities that still you could use a microfiche-based, uh, imaging system.
Good. So, so just look into making sure that we're getting our, you know, enough money to take care of that.
Yeah.
My other comment is, is along the lines of what we discussed on, as far as the focus and things, is now we have some, you know, significant projects coming along. And I mentioned this to the manager while back. We need, we need to invest in some promotion of our community, whether it's transit corridors, whether it's grade separation, uh, and, and certain things. And so we, I'd like to see us invest in some kiosks, some full-color glossy little, you know, flashy things that we can set up at Tanfran or set up in, in our mobile and can set up either right here in City Hall. Catch the resident's eye, you know, and let them know that there's, uh, you know, see the artist's rendition of what the downtown's gonna look like, what that, uh, grade separation's gonna look like, you know? And hopefully get, uh, get some buy-in from Caltrain and, you know, and to help out with that. But I think we need to start letting people know, because they're experiencing discomfort right now. You know, and so it'd be better to let them know what they're gonna be going through the next two years, you know, with the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
And also outreach to other people outside San Bruno, so they know what development opportunities are here.
Yeah, great. No, and, and your department has done great in that, and you, you specifically, and, uh, the community development has done great things, both inside and outside of the community and stuff, and you, you are a big part of why we're, you know, we're growing so well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the chair. This might, I might answer my own question, but under Community Development Planning Division, the regular salaries are down about the same that they're up in the building inspection. So is that just a reallocation?
Yeah, that's a reallocation.
I'm learning that tonight.
Yes, reallocation of the quarter of my time.
Okay. And then, can you tell me on page 304, non-operating transfer line item 8999? Now, I see that as a new item. Obviously, it's very clear what it's for, but obviously it's significant. So could you just elaborate as to if you're, where, what that item is? Obviously, other than debt transfer for admin services, debt transfer for principal payment, debt transfer, interest payment, et cetera.
Might have to defer to the finance director on this one, is...
This line item is actually the debt service for the cops...
This line item is actually the debt service for the cops, debt for the police service, police station. So it's ongoing expenditures that comes out of the redevelopment agency.
Oh, it's, it's just broken down. So it's always been 600, 650,000.
It's an annual debt service.
It's just, is it, am I wrong that it's new within the budget, or was it there last year? I'm not.
I believe it's there last year.
Okay.
Anything else? Michael? Irene? Anything for Aaron?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's my understanding we're going to adjourn this meeting to tomorrow evening, where we can pick up the balance of the budget discussion. Is that correct, City Manager?
That is correct, and I would ask that the council keep in mind that we're coming forward very quickly thereafter with requests that you consider the budget for final approval. So any and all things that you might be interested in, that you would like to see incorporated into your final action tomorrow, would be a good time to discuss those with us in order that we can capture that prior to the meeting and streamline your consideration on Tuesday night.
All right, thank you. We don't have a closed session this evening, which is really unusual, I guess. Go to item four, which is adjournment. We will meet here tomorrow evening at the next portion of our study session for budget. Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Irene.
Good seeing you again.